I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we do not have any recognitions or proclamations to present, so we will turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. Just a reminder, whether you're speaking virtually or in person, comments need to be limited to two minutes. If they run over two minutes, then the chair is required to ask you to conclude your comments. So with this, clerk, will we start with the virtual first?
Yes, we have Debbie Detmer. Debbie Detmer.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Debbie Detmer from Shawnee, Kansas, and thanks to the New Green Deal and this board members from Senator Thompson, he just found out that the electrical rates are going up to 52 percent, that's quarter to quarter, and 233 percent a year over here due to energy and cost adjustments. That's a covert and innocuous sounding way to say that the utilities have to adjust their energy purchasing costs, largely due to the renewable energy and the fact that it is unreliable and not available on demand. We already have too much of it in Kansas, and now we are going to add more solar on top of that. Kansas currently has excess generating capacity of 26 percent, and that will climb to 50 percent sometime next year. We also provide a massive amount of electricity to the southwest power pod, a 14-state region which Kansas is a part of, and although we are the biggest producer of power, we also have the highest average retail electrical rates. The law of supply and demand dictates that if you have an abundance of something, the price comes down, but we are not benefiting from being the power center of the central plains. This is wrong, and it needs to be fixed, and it is, your moves are making it hard on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Now, now in person, we have Ben Hobart. Ben Hobart.
In two minutes, it is impossible to address all the deficiencies with vaccine-related biological products. Advisory committee's determination that the benefits of the Moderna and Pfizer Biotech's clot shots outweigh the risk when considering their administration to children under the age of five. Suffice it to say, the data supporting such determination is pathetic. A very minimal number of study participants, an extremely limited absolute reduction in infectionness, a very limited study period, and follow-up are among the deficiencies. Moreover, the committee members acknowledge the limited timeframe of the minimal protection and the waning efficacy suggesting that in any event, boosters will likely be required. In this regard, one correction from last week. There was one serious case in each of the Moderna and Pfizer Biotech natural immunity groups, but neither required hospitalization. Parents, I beg you, do not get your children the clot shots without doing your own due diligence. To assist you in making an informed decision, I have reserved the Harmon Park Pavilion, located at 77th Place in Delmore, just south of Shawnee Mission East High School, for this coming Sunday, June 26th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for a public discussion of the advisability of clot shotting children under the age of five. I will present facts regarding the EUA extension, the risks, the uncertainties, and the incredible God-given natural immunity which we all possess free of charge and its likely protection to our youth. Then I will be open to questions. I won't know all the answers, and I am not a doctor, but I am your neighbor. I will provide information based on several hundred hours of research and will offer the judgments of numerous physicians, epidemiologists, and virologists as to why the clot shots are not advisable for healthy children. I will include websites which you can access to further inform your decision. I think it will be informative to any parent or anyone who is contemplating a booster with an open mind who wants to make a truly informed decision for their child's benefit or their own health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have Sherri Collins. Sherri Collins.
Good morning. We have election fraud in Johnson County. The machines must go. Our county must have paper ballots, hand counting, and absolutely no drop boxes. My most recent observation comes directly from today's Johnson County Agenda Briefing Sheets regarding the contract renewal for election printing and mail services. This document states that in 2020, Sea Change Printing Company mailed out 231,000 ballots to Johnson County voters. On the Johnson County Elections website for 2020, the data shows 164,000 ballots were mailed out. This is a difference of 66,000 ballots. Where did the ballots go? Where did the ballots end up? Perhaps, maybe they're in the unmonitored drop boxes that are located throughout the county. This is quite a large number of ballots that got mailed that are unaccounted for. Connie Schmidt stated on live TV that the sheriff was monitoring our drop boxes. That was a lie. He was not. Number three, the voting systems are connected to the Internet. Here are a few examples right here. Screenshots. Some Johnson County Commissioners and the Elections Office repeatedly says that they are not connected to the Internet. This is also a lie. Number four, I have requested a spreadsheet and detailed information on the Zuck bucks that Johnson County received in the amount of $856,000. These items are expenditure, the first item on the expenditure list is $180,000 for Cradle Point Connector for cellular router services for connectivity on Election Day polling places. The second item on the spreadsheet is for $139,000 for election workers' stipends for advanced voting locations. I hope they got steak and lobster that day. At a minimum, this is disingenuous and non-transparent. The detailed bookkeeping of the grant expenditures should be open to public view. It's pretty obvious to everyone, if you don't have anything to hide, then don't cover it up. There's no reason to withhold this information. One more thing, $23,000 was spent on curbside voting on Election Day.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Now, we have Jennifer Williams. Jennifer Williams.
My name is Jennifer Williams. I'm at 21993 Moonlight Road in Spring Hill. Even though I'm in Spring Hill, Edgerton's trying to take over our neighborhood. I know we've been for the last year and a half before you. Everyone knows about the infamous narrow corridor at this point. I'm sure plenty of you have been told it's not narrow because it was 60 feet and not 50, or it wasn't five miles long like the casinos out in Kansas, but the judge disagrees with you. On June 7th, Judge Vaino confirmed this is an illegal annexation by Edgerton. They used that narrow corridor according to KSA 12-520G with the intent to access non-contiguous land. And so if you look at this calendar of events I've given you, it explains, they annexed the narrow corridor on December 10th. They had over, almost 700 acres that they could not get contiguous land to for many years. It was owned by North Point. The people along Gardner Road held arms, said, "You buy one, all of us, or you buy none of us," until they were able to get across, and that gave them access. The day after they got access, they asked for rezoning to industrial for all 700 acres. They weren't even in their city limits yet. They wouldn't go on to be in their city limits until December 17th. The judge said that was narrow with the intent to access. The problem is, he had to dismiss our case because we don't have standing. The only people who can have standing on this are the two people who did the offense, like they're going to police themselves, or the Attorney General. And I'm here today begging you, you guys have told us forever, "There's nothing we can do. We're trying, there's, sorry, hands are tied, you know, home rule," and we're saying, "Please uphold your oath of office to enforce the Kansas statutes and help us contact Derek Schmidt and tell his office to do what's right. He is the only person who can prosecute this, and thousands of residents are going to lose their homes, many of them Century Farms and original homesteaders from the 1800s if you guys don't help us protect our neighborhood." Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have Nancy Moneymaker. Nancy Moneymaker.
Hi, I'm Nancy Moneymaker, DeSoto, Kansas, and as the elections are fast approaching, I'd like for you all to seriously consider an alternative to the current way of voting in Johnson County. We spend millions of dollars on our current machine-based voting system, starting with hundreds of thousands in the delivery of the equipment and supplies and over half a million in printing and mailing services, just to name a few costs. This is a huge financial endeavor for our county. Let's spend our money with wisdom and use that money to instead pay real people to administer the process and count the vote. Consider removing the machine out of the equation. Go back to the paper ballots, go back to counting our ballots by hand. Use the tried and true system that will give confidence in our voting system back to the people. No worrying about unknown Wi-Fi access around polling areas, no separation of individual ballots from individual voter names, no possible hacking of our votes, and if needed, easier recounts. Real people administering the process, counting the votes, and observing the actual vote counting. With the current inflation, more people wondering how they'll pay for gas to get to the store, pay for the food at the store, pay for the gas to get home. What if we put our county money into those people's pockets and hire them to make our voting system more fair and free? Hire retired citizens on a fixed income, hire youth not able to find a fulfilling summer job, hire teachers, and many others that are ready and willing to participate. Let's let people actively participate again. Put confidence back into the process. Thank you for your consideration in spending our money on actual people in this community instead of machines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have Frank Moley. Frank Moley.
My name is Frank Moley. I'm from unincorporated Johnson County, west of Spring Hill. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My wife and I and children have been lifelong residents of this area, most of that time here in Johnson County. I'm here today to discuss the back-channel discussions to widen 199th and either amend or remove the existing car nap instead of enforcing it, but before I get to that, I'm going to publicly ask this board and the county attorney to investigate Commissioner Allenbrand and her refusal to allow the impacted citizens, such as myself, into her invite-only private meeting yesterday. Ms. Allenbrand ran on a platform of public safety and transparency, and is showing neither with her secret private meetings with select citizens and unwillingness to actually help enforce the existing car nap. I ask this council to censure or reprimand Commissioner Allenbrand for her behavior yesterday, which was at best unethical and at worst illegal. Now, my family owns this small plot of land that we built our dream house, that we built with financial responsibility. The constant speeding on the road and aggressive driving is out of hand. I have invited the sheriff personally to use my property through his deputy to stop this behavior, something the department has yet to do. My brother was hit driving a family tractor onto my property because of this behavior. This is not a, there is not a single month that goes by that someone in my household isn't run off this road because of a truck driver that is speeding or driving recklessly on 199th, which per car nap shouldn't be used by semis to avoid the scales, among other reasons. I ask this commission to listen to the people who actually, who they actually represent, the voters of this county, those who pay real taxes and keep trucks and other dangerous driving and speeding they exhibit off our rural roads. I ask you to direct the sheriff to control the speed on these roads, as well as remove the trucks that should be on the interstates and state highways.
Hey, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Now, we have Andrew Cross. Andrew Cross.
Thermal runaway event is one overheated battery short-circuiting and creating a jet that lights other batteries. Heat transfer, not oxygen. Industrial firework, June 29th, 2021, Morris, Illinois. 100 tons of lithium-ion batteries in warehouse caught fire. Purple Cave from EPA did not extinguish fire. 4,000 residents and small businesses were evacuated. Sounds like DeSoto. Portland Cement extinguished the fires several days later on July 2nd. Lithium-ion currently presents the greatest safety concern because of their popularity and demonstrated frequency of events. Michael Schellenberger, 10x, Danubia, Speaker. Our proposal was 300 billion investment in renewable energies. In 2000, Barack Obama embraced our vision. U.S. invested $150 billion. Renewables take a pretty significant amount of land. Big transmission lines are needed from country to city. They only generate electricity 10 to 30 percent of the time. We converted hydroelectric dams into big batteries. Problems of land formation for that, expensive to make the conversions, water scarcity in irrigation. There are blowouts of the grid. Wind kills eagles, threatened and endangered species. Building solar farms, you have to clear the whole area of wildlife? Estimating 6,000 birds a year right now catching on fire above solar farms. In California, integrating all of that unreliable power, our electricity prices go up five times more than the rest of the country. From Germany and France, nuclear just ends up being more reliable.
Thank you.
Now, we have either Dennis Baldwin or Carla McCoy.
Good morning, I'm Carla McCoy. I live at about 199th and Clearview in the 3rd District. I want to, I'm going to piggyback on what Frank had to say a minute ago about 199th Street. My concern is, the road was not built to accommodate interstate traffic. There's a huge problem with speeding on this road between 169 Highway and 69 Highway. It's semis. There are bicyclics on the road. This road goes by the Spring Hill High School. There's just no place for semis on 199th Street, and my request would be that, well, in the seven years we've been in the House, there have been at least three big trucks off the road. It's just, it's incredibly dangerous. They speed, obviously I can't measure the speed, but you can look at it and tell they're not at the posted limit. So, number one, I would ask that you do something to ensure that 199th continues to be a type 1 roadway with some improvements, though, to maybe include bike lanes, and also identify and implement appropriate enforcement measures that would redirect these semis to the interstate highways that were built to accommodate them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, that completes our public comment.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. I do not normally comment on speakers and the information that they relay, but I will say this, many, many times, all of us on this board have small meetings with constituents on particular issues that they are of interest, and in the case that was mentioned, it came to my attention from some emails that I received, and I talked with those who had distributed those emails, and there was a lot of misinformation advanced and discussed, that there was a public hearing, for instance, and there was a public meeting, and all of that information was incorrect. So, as always, social media is a, sometimes, all kinds of opinions are expressed there, whether they're correct or not, folks need to be, check them out. So, thank you very much. At this time, there are no notes for the record, and we will move to the agenda, consent agenda items.
Item number one, consider authorizing an exception to competition and approving service agreement renewals for respite care services with DECA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $130,000 for one additional 12-month contract period ending June 30th, 2023, per Administrative Policy and Procedure Number 110.180.A.16. And item number two, consider approving Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, and Grant Easements with Van Trust Real Estate for the New Century Commerce Center to facilitate the master development plan as recommended by the Johnson County Airport Commission.
Is there a commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately?
Yes, I would like to have item two considered separately, please.
Item two, okay, thank you. Is there any one president who would like to have an item considered separately? All right, if not, it's back before the commission, a motion to be in order on item one. Ms. Allenbrand.
I would like to move to approve the consent agenda of item one.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Hanslick.
Motion hasn't been made in a second to approve the consent agenda, item number one, as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Item number two, Ms. O'Hara, you had a question?
Yes, I just want to make a statement. The agreement that the county has with Van Trust Real Estate is that we have given them a 75 percent property tax abatement on that, on this project. I am very concerned about this. The, under, the erosion of our tax base because of industrial revenue bonds stands now at $1.1 billion of real estate off the tax rolls. Under TIPS, it's 2.8 billion. This, this was a decision that was made prior to me being on the board. This, this action is, is necessary, but I just want to, to go ahead with what has already been approved prior to me being here, and I just, I just want to explain to people that this is bad public policy, and we have to stop it. And so those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. I would speak to the comment about bad public policy. If you look at the economic development in this county, if you look at the jobs created and the wealth that has been created by cities taking action and the county taking action to support economic development, our community and our success, economic success as a community and individually, it would be much, much less than it is. So, do I hear a motion on item number two?
Mr. Chairman, just in response to that, the economic development promise is that all taxpayers will benefit from this with lower property taxes, and that has not happened. Our taxes continue to go up and up and up, and part of the reason is the erosion of our tax base. Thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to ask if Cindy Dunham had some comments.
Ms. Dunham.
Cindy Dunham, Legal Department. Before you is a Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions for the, and Grant Easements for the New Century Commerce Center located on the north and east sides of New Century Air Center. The declaration is proposed by the master developer, Van Trust Real Estate, and it addresses general items of operation primarily of the common area maintenance, repair, and expenses, as well as grants, provides for the granting of easements within the commerce area. It is designed to facilitate the leasing and operation of the Commerce Center and to establish certain quality standards for the Commerce Center, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Dunham, one of the things that I'm looking forward to in this proposal is the help of relief of truck routes, being able to have rail, and also plane will help us alleviate some of that traffic. So that was my only comment.
Okay, other questions or comments? Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, I was wondering if Mr. Otto was available, if he's on, on Zoom.
Your question is?
Well, I wanted to ask if he could just give a very brief overview of the development of, of this, this process and how it is designed to actually bring in funding for the airport so that the taxpayers do not have to continue to underwrite that loss, and that this was a, a plan that came out of the Airport Commission. It was very carefully regarded, very carefully looked at in terms of the income that would come from it, and the pros and cons of whether to do it or not, and it was very carefully studied every step of the way with the, the purpose being to save taxpayer money in the end, so.
Well stated. Other, other questions? Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions and Grant Easements with Van Trust Real Estate for the New Century Commerce Center to facilitate the master development plan as recommended by the Johnson County Airport Commission.
Hanslick, second.
Myers made the motion, Hanslick seconded the motion to approve the agreement with Van Trust as recommended. Any further questions or comments? Ms. O'Hara.
Thank you. Well, best plans laid. We had the New Century Link building that has never paid any property taxes, and now is costing the county at least $1.5 million a year as it sets vacant because no one wants it, and, and these, these industrial warehouses will be paying only 25 percent of their fair share of property taxes. The people that, and talking about employment, our employment rate is, unemployment rate is, what, 1.7 percent? We can't find, I own a small manufacturing company with my son. It's very difficult to find employees, and, and we're talking about bringing in more demand on these, on, on the workforce, and the people just aren't here, and it's going to put a huge burden on the existing businesses. But on the warehouses, don't worry, they are quickly going to automation, and there will be few people in those warehouses. It will be automated. You can, you can go out and read articles after article after article in, in the, in business journals, and you will, in tech journals, and you will see this. I mean, my son and I, we're looking at automation because there's no other choice at this point. So, you know, you talk about economic development. Economic development for who? It's not for the common man because our taxes are going up and up, and now energy prices, I mean, this is, the, the common person is being so squeezed, it's just incredible.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we've had this discussion at this dais for a number of years, and some of us have a different perspective. Some of us have concerns about the use of certain economic development tools, incentives as they were, as they were, and they do benefit, I think, some portions of the economy at some times and have a role, but Johnson County, I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, would be vibrant and strong economically without the heavy use of any number of these tools, and you and I may disagree on that, but going forward, that will continue to be a discussion because it's a valid concern, and we need to make sure that the well-being and economic interests of the community at large are well-maintained.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Hanslick.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just encourage anyone who is interested in this topic to go back and read all of the information that we have discussed on this dais leading up to this, this point. Nothing was done without very careful consideration. I've, I've heard some generalizations mentioned that I don't think are, are applied to this particular project. There's, I would go back and look at the actual facts and data for this, for this project.
Hey, thank you. Any other comments? All right, if not, the motion is before us. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Commissioner Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Turning to the action agenda, next item.
Item number three, consider approving the June 2nd, 2022 business session minutes. Chairman Ilert was absent and must abstain.
Are there any additions or corrections? If not, do I hear a motion? Ms. Allenbrand.
I move to approve the business meetings as written. I move to approve, um, the business meetings as written.
Second, Hanslick.
Motion has been made in a second to approve the minutes as presented. Again, I will state for the record that I was, I did not attend that meeting, so as a matter of course, I must abstain. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Abstain. I have six votes in favor, one abstention, the motion carried. Next item.
Item number four, resolution number 042-22, consider city of Gardner applications, FDP-22-02, final development plan and FP-22-03, final plat for Prairie Trace Estates, third plat on 16.5 acres, located in the vicinity of 178th Street and Houston Street, Gardner, Kansas, and located within one mile of the New Century Air Center.
Mr. Penley.
Good morning, Commissioners Sean Penley, Planning Staff. Uh, indicated this is a city of Gardner application with a request for a final development plan and final plat for Prairie Trace Estates, third plat. This subject property is located within one mile of New Century Air Center and the purpose for this review is to ensure compatibility with the airport per Kansas State statutes. The, um, the subject property is located, uh, near the vicinity of 175th Street and Claire Rhodes, located to the west of Claire Rhodes, south of 175th Street, is indicated on the vicinity map. Uh, this is the first, uh, excuse me, the third phase of the single-family development for Prairie Trace Estates. Uh, the first two phases have been approved also by the county. Uh, the development consists of 44 new single-family residential homes on 16.5 acres. And this, um, the rezoning and preliminary plat for Prairie Trace Estates was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on June 25th, 2020. The final plat is consistent with that approved preliminary plat, so same layout of streets, same, uh, density of development, and so it is, uh, consistent with the approved preliminary development plan. County staff reviewed this application for consistency with, uh, and, uh, compatibility with the New Century Air Center Comprehensive Compatibility Plan. It is, uh, does meet all those, uh, guidelines. Uh, the subject property is not located within a flight corridor and is not within an area of noise impact. This is the final plat drawing, uh, showing the details for the, the proposed development. The Airport Commission considered this application at a hearing on May 25th, 2022. The Airport Commission recommended approval with stipulations that were recommended by staff and as included in your, in the resolution. There was no public comments at that meeting and the Airport Commission recommended approval unanimously. Uh, that concludes staff's presentation. Um, also the applicant, uh, a representative of the applicant is available on Zoom.
Hey, any questions of staff? Is the applicant present? Sean.
I believe the applicant may be.
The applicant is on Zoom. One second, please.
Any comments the applicant would like to make? All right, thank you. This does come before us.
One second, please.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Any, any comments you would like to make?
Uh, we do not, uh, on this or the following application unless there's any questions.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Is there anyone present who would like to make a comment on this item? If not, it's a matter for the Commission, a motion would be in order. Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt resolution number 042-22, approving a final development plan and final plat for Prairie Trace Estates, third flat located within one mile of the New Century Airport for 44 single-family residential lots, 16.5 acres located the vicinity of 178th Street and Houston Street, Gardner, Kansas for the reasons subject to speculations as recommended by the Airport Commission.
Myers, second.
Allen Brand made the motion. Myers seconded the motion to approve the city of Gardner application as recommended by the Airport Commission. The only reason this is before us is because this is a city item which is within one mile of the airport, so. Any, any further discussion? Ms. O'Hara.
Just, just a quick comment. I know that we are re, uh, doing a, a revision of our, um, or relook at our, um, requirements around the, um, the airport, both New Century and Executive. And for years and years, I have voiced my concern that we are, uh, developing too dense of, of projects around the airport. I know that this is, these are one-acre lots.
Uh, this is Sean Penley, Planning Staff. Uh, this is a little bit more dense than one-acre lots. I believe, uh, average about 8,000 square feet to 9,000.
Oh, so these are, these are, this is a regular subdivision. I had, I had mis, I had misread that.
Yeah.
Well, again, it's just that we, we are intensifying the development around the airport and I have voiced my concern that we're doing this study after the horse has already left the barn, but I guess that, that this is what we're doing, so. Uh, and, and we do not have any authority at this point, uh, to deny this, so I, I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Yeah, well, again, this is a final development plan, so the other processes have been properly completed and this is the final action. Is there any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Going to item number five.
Resolution number 043-22, consider city of Gardner applications, PP-22-01, preliminary plat on 18.8 acres and FP-22-04, final plat on 6.3 acres for New Trails North Commercial, located on the southwest corner of 175th Street and New Trails Parkway, Gardner, Kansas, and located within one mile of the New Century Air Center.
Mr. Penley.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners Sean Penley, Planning Staff. Uh, as indicated, uh, this is a city of Gardner. These are also city of Gardner applications. This is, uh, related to the previous application. Uh, this is for a preliminary plat and final plat for New Trails North Commercial. Uh, this again is located within one mile of the New Century Air Center, so it is subject to review and approval by the county, uh, for airport compatibility. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat for 11 commercial lots on 18.8 acres and a final plat for two commercial lots on 6.3 acres. Uh, the subject property is located just south, or on the south side of 175th Street and, uh, just to the east of I-35, uh, right of way. And this is also the first phase of the commercial development and was also a part of the approved, uh, Prairie Trace development with mixed use with commercial, single-family and multifamily. This is the first phase of the commercial development. Uh, as indicated here on the vicinity map, um, there is a new, um, trail, a new, uh, street that was constructed, New Trails Parkway, that, uh, you may have seen. This is going to be the first phase that fronts 175th Street for the commercial development. Uh, the preliminary plat includes 11 lots and these, um, there are no specific commercial users identified at this time. Uh, the applicant is requesting this preliminary plat for the, uh, construction, the infrastructure, uh, for the, serving this development, so there will be a, a private road or a new road that serves this, internal road serving the commercial lots off of New Trails Parkway. Uh, and the final plat is the two lots that are at the southwest corner of 175th Street and New Trails Parkway. The applicant has not identified any specific commercial users at this time. Any final development plans will require approval by the city and then approval by the county for compatibility with the airport. This is a part of the overall commercial development that was approved for this, uh, Prairie Trace development in 2020 and it is, um, it is consistent with that plan in terms of the layout of commercial, so follows the same general area. Staff did review this application for compatibility with the New Century Air Center Compatibility Plan. Uh, it, it is, uh, consistent in terms of the, the location. Uh, this was identified as a commercial area, um, that was a part of the approval process and so it is consistent with the land use plan. The Airport Commission considered this application on May 25th and they recommended approval as stipulated. Nobody from the public spoke at that meeting and staff recommended approval as included in the resolution. And we'll just note too, uh, this also is with the previous application, this site is not located with a, within, and a flight corridor and is not within an area of noise impact, so there were no concerns from the Airport Commission regarding this application. Uh, that concludes our presentation. Again, the same applicant, uh, Mark Brewer with Schleckland Associates is available on Zoom.
Mr. Penley, again, the zoning has been previously approved by all appropriate bodies. Uh, this is preliminary and final plat, is that correct?
It is a preliminary plat and a final plat for two lots and that is correct. The zoning was approved in 2020 by the county.
Thank you. Ms. O'Hara.
Um, thank you. So why, under what reasons are we continuing to approve these, this development, um, within the mile of, of the airport? What is the county's position? Is the county's position just simply because Gardner has approved this then, and the, and the Airport Commission has approved it, then the county planning department is saying because, because of these approvals that they are approving it? Or do you look at, at it with a different lens as far as from a planning point of view whether this type of development is compatible with our airport?
What we're looking at is for state statutes, uh, the, the Kansas State statutes require all zoning and development within one mile of the public airports to be approved by the county. So what we're looking at is compatibility with the airport. So our review is strictly regarding airport compatibility. The approving jurisdiction is the city, so the city approved this plan, but the county has to approve it for airport compatibility. So what we're looking at is through the, the guidelines and recommendations in the airport compatibility plan.
Okay, so it is your opinion that this development is compatible with the ongoing, uh, function of our, of our airport?
That's correct.
Okay, that there is no, that there's no conflict with this, with this, um, development? And this is, this is not in, this is not in the flight path, correct?
That is correct. It is not within a flight corridor and not within the area of noise impact. So it's, it's located about, uh, I believe this is sixth, excuse me, 4,725 feet to the southeast of the primary runway, so it's, it's not within a, a flight corridor.
Okay, and because I know that we, that we have approved, uh, some development that actually is in the flight path, uh, of, of the, of New Century and, um, that, that is very concerning. Okay, well, so it is the planning department's position that this is compatible with our airport?
As stipulated, staff believes this is compatible with the airport and the Airport Commission agreed and.
That determination was made by the Airport Commission. Every one of these items are reviewed diligently by the Airport Commission to be in compliance with all requirements, federal and otherwise, for the airport and this comes to us with a recommendation to approve from the Airport Commission.
Uh, yes, that's what I gathered from the comments from Mr. Penley, so thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mr. Penley, thank you for clarifying the statutes and how the process of this goes. And I, I do want to commend the staff because you have been, you know, we can't go back and fix something that happened years ago when there's new staff and, um, I think that a lot of people don't understand the work that's been going on, not only with the cities but also the airport, to try to protect that. And I know that it's, you've been working diligently to try to do that and I really appreciate that homework and that trying to make it right from here on out. So, thank you.
Other comments or questions by Commissioners? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item?
Chairman, we have Mark Brewer on again. That is on Zoom.
The applicant, you wish to make any comments?
Mark, if you could unmute yourself.
Just time.
Mark, do you have any comments?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Do I hear a motion? Ms. Allen Brand.
Mr. Chair, I have that motion. I move to adopt resolution number 043-22, approving a preliminary plat and final plat for New Trails North Commercial located the southwest corner of 175th Street and New Trails Parkway, Gardner, Kansas, for the reasons and subject to the speculations as recommended by the Airport Commission.
Myers, second.
Allen Brand made the motion. Myers seconded the motion to approve the application, uh, by the city of Gardner as recommended by the Airport Commission for approval. Any further questions or comments? If not, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Item number six.
Resolution number 030-22, consider approving speed limit increases on various roads in the unincorporated area of Johnson County.
Mr. Vos.
Good morning. Jeff Vos of Public Works. This item is to increase speed limits on 13 road segments as noted in the resolution. Several months ago, the Sheriff's Office asked Public Works to look at 45 segments of unincorporated county roads and consider increasing the speed limit to the county standard of 45 miles per hour for asphalt roads. We completed an engineering study for these segments, which included determining the 85th percentile speeds as well as a review of the safety and sight distance issues at entrances. Of the 45 segments, 13 segments met the criteria for a safe increase of speed limits to either 40 or 45 miles per hour as shown in the resolutions. All the segments in the resolution have significant evidence of non-compliance of the existing 35 mile an hour speed limits by having 85th percentile speeds in the 43 to 54 mile per hour range. The 85th percentile speed is simply the speed that 85% of the drivers will operate and is an important consideration when posting speed limits. Drivers need to perceive speed limits as credible if adequate levels of voluntary compliance are to be achieved. Routine violation of speed limits by most drivers may breed contempt not only for the speed limits but for other traffic regulations. As a general proposition then, speed limits should be set at levels that are largely self-enforcing, i.e. near the 85th percentile speed, so that law enforcement officials can concentrate their efforts on the worst offenders. Public support, in other words, willingness to obey, is closely linked with the reasonableness of speed limits. Additionally, this is a bit counterintuitive, but studies have shown that posting speed limits at or near the 85th percentile group the traffic speeds more closely together and reduces conflict between vehicles driving at different speeds. Issues such as needing to pass or miscalculating speeds of other vehicles is reduced. Both Public Works and the Sheriff's Office support the speed, speed limits proposed in this resolution and Sheriff Hayden and I are here to answer any questions.
Questions of the staff? Ms. O'Hara.
Um, well, this really isn't to the staff, it's a statement. I'm, this, I have had disagreements on the segments that are in my district and I would like to, um, take those off, uh, when I will make an, I will make an amendment to any motion because I have great concerns and I can go into those and with, in detail.
Uh, Sheriff. Can you speak to, to the reason for the request on this, uh, item?
Sure. Most of the speed limits that we're looking at are between 35 and 45 miles an hour, usually a 10 mile an hour increase. Usually the roads have been improved and there are shoulders and there are, and they've been paved. So that's what most of the requests are for. We're not opposed to any modifications that need to be made.
All right, thank you very much. Other questions? Ms. Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff Hayden and, um, our staff, I, I want to thank you for bringing these forward. Your vehicles are out on these roads all the time and, uh, if anybody knows safety, it's, it's you. And so I appreciate you all working together, not only internally between both parties but also with the cities as well. And I know the staff took this to the, the cities that were, um, also affected. So there was a lot of work and study and research that went into this and I really appreciate you working together.
Other questions, staff? Ms. Hanslick.
Uh, yes, thank you. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Vos taking the time yesterday to talk with me about this issue because, uh, as someone who does not regularly drive on these roads, I, I think, I think the speed limit should be about 20 when I drive on them because I, I, I'm not used to driving on. on narrow roads with those, often with those drop-offs. But I do understand the rationale behind it. But I had a couple of more questions. Will, when we're looking at this map, these green areas, will there be a change where the green stops? For example, between, oh, I don't know, Flum and 191st, when you get to 207th, will there be a change in the speed limit? And what is the rationale? Will people just suddenly change to a different speed limit?
Flum is a great example. It's quite wide. It's open. There aren't any sight issues on it. And at each mile, there is a stop sign. So our drivers are having to stop, so it's easy to successfully reset that speed limit on each mile.
Okay, but what about some of the others? Is there going to be, like, will it go from 45 down to 30?
It'll go from 35. Yeah, because it changes to a gravel road at that point.
Okay.
So. But people are going to have to stop, and then they cross and they go, and then there's a new speed limit sign. So it's not like they're driving consistently through this, having to raise and lower their speeds. They're having to stop and reset at each mile.
Okay. Ms. O'Hara, you have a question?
No, I'll just have tons of comments and amendments.
Well, okay. I, you know, over the years, I think I've been involved in a lot of discussions about speed limits, and I very much appreciate the professional engineers who have looked at this question and the Sheriff's Office, who's also made evaluations of this question. And I am prepared to support their recommendation. Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make one more comment of how much research and study went into. There was a couple of deaths over a period of time out at Four Corners, and there was a lot of research that went into that and a lot of data. And that included the Sheriff's Office and our Public Works and also the City of Gardner. And there was corrections made with sizes of signs and also just the speed sign and cutting some trees. But there was a lot of work that went into that. And I regularly drive out on those roads. And so I, you know, I'm not, I don't go, I have to set my, don't let the sheriff know that. I have to set my, yes, I don't go too fast. But I just really appreciate all that work and the work that you did on that. I mean, that was something that wasn't really publicized, but a lot of thought went into that, and I really appreciate that. And I do support this as well.
Okay, all right. Other questions? Ms. Fast, any questions?
No.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? Yes, ma'am?
Jennifer Williams, 21993 Moonlight Road. I would like to respectfully request that the section of Cedar Niles be removed. All of our speed limits out there are 35 miles an hour. And I think it's interesting that if 80% of the people are breaking the law, we just get rid of the law because you're not getting rid of that stop sign there, and a lot of people blow through it, too. And my concern, driving my children east to west, the only way we have to get to Spring Hill, we have to choose our death trap, whether it's 199th, 207th, 215th, 223rd. They blow through those stop signs all the time. And so we literally, even though we don't have the stop sign, we stop east to west, look really close, both directions, and then go because they are speeding. And I think the solution on that road is to enforce the speeding instead of just letting them go faster, especially since everything else out there is 35. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
I'm grateful that you guys are all considering these comments and the deaths that are occurring. And I hope that you give that same consideration when you start discussing the experimental jabs for six-month-old kids.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, if not, the item is back for the commission. A motion would be in order. Do I hear a motion?
So, Mr. Chair-
I won't make the motion if no one else will.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does the sheriff want to pull that out, or you want to leave it in, or is there any? I mean, I know you've done the research and study. I don't-
Some of the issues we've got, and a lot of times we'll, our officers will put out, we get complaints from the neighborhoods about people speeding. And sometimes we'll put the officers out there. Unfortunately, usually the first people we write are the people that live in the neighborhoods. And it's not a popular thing. We put the speed trailer out. And it's interesting because I live in a rural area, too, and I've got trucks and cars and everything go by my house. And sometimes it looks faster than they're going, I mean, they're going, it looks like they're going faster than they actually are. So it's a tough, it's a tough deal to predict what's right and what's wrong. We use all the data we can, possibly, traffic counts. We use accident information. Our officers, where there's problem areas, they're out there a lot. But it's a tough deal to crack because we got one officer per district. And that is very difficult to pick and choose where we do enforcement. We try to do it where there's high traffic areas so we can have more impact. We try to look like we're everywhere, even though we can't be. So that's some of the things we deal with. We'll put a traffic trailer out there sometimes and try to get average speeds. And a lot of times, it doesn't justify what's going on. And I'm like you guys. Every day, I drive on a 35 mile an hour roadway, and I speed a little. And they're pretty good at stopping me. So.
Sheriff, let me ask you this. If we go ahead and approve this, if there are adjustments that need to be made based upon additional research or observations, those will come back to us, I'm sure, right?
Absolutely. And these guys have been great to work with, Brian and his crew. You know, there are considerations that we may want something changed, we may want it lowered. But I'll give you an example. We have to also deal with all of our stakeholders or neighbors, if you will. I mean, for instance, 143rd Street's 45 in Johnson County, the minute you hit Douglas County, it's 55. So-
In Leewood, it's 35.
Yeah. So, I mean, it can be all over the place on a roadway because of density, because of sight distance, number of driveways on a particular road. And if we have accidents, you know, Four Corners was a perfect example. I mean, I'm out there on a fatality accident, and the neighbor's coming out to me. And we worked with Public Works, and in less than a day, we had a four-way stop in there with big signs that flash in light. So sometimes we can be super responsive. Sometimes it takes a while, and you got to, we have to study it. So it can be all over the place.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, just a clarification. I believe that it was stated that you had requested 45 segments, if that's the right terminology, to be considered, analyzed by Public Works, and 13 were confirmed or approved. Do you have any objections to these 13 at this point?
I don't have any objections to any of it. You know, again, if you've got residents on input and they feel that there needs to be a change, I'm all about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion when you're ready.
All right. Other questions? Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you. This would be for the sheriff or Mr. Vos. How will the, how will these new speed limits, if adopted, be posted? Will there be more, larger signs so that people know there's been a change, or?
We typically will either put a flasher or some flagging on them for, I mean, it can be out there up to a year that those would be out there, but at least for a month or two that they'll be out there.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yeah, I'm going to respectfully ask the sheriff to take off Flum Road from 191st to 207th. I was out there, and I ride my bike out there. And as far as differences of speed, I mean, we have farm equipment out there. We have bicycles out there. We have pedestrians out there. And that section of road is just a chip and seal. It does not have a center line, nor does it have markings on the edge. This is, there's no shoulders, and the roadway is rough. And you, and there is a couple of places that you want to go into the other lane to dodge the potholes. And I just, I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned about 207th Street, Schweitzer to Antioch. This is a gravel road, and then it has this pavement, and then goes right back to gravel road. Again, I ride my bike out there. And to encourage people to go faster on that one segment. And then Cedar Niles, Jennifer Williams made statements on that, and I would respectfully ask that one to be removed. And then Antioch Road, 207th North to Overland Park City Limits. And I will note that on Flum, from 175th to 191st, that that is 35 miles an hour in Overland Park. And the roadway diminishes in quality after it crosses 199th Street. So I would just respectfully ask those segments be removed. Obviously, I am using these roads on a regular basis. I have conversation with the folks that live out there. And especially on Flum Road, there's a lot of hidden driveways on these segments of roads. I mean, there's the brush grows up. I mean, an example, 191st and Quavira, that's in Overland Park. And you have to, you have to get out in the roadway to be able to see if you can turn on to 191st off of Quavira. And these roadways just are not built for speed. And I understand that people go over the speed limit, but the natural response is, well, if the speed limit is increased, then I can go five more miles over that, and I won't get a ticket. So I would just respectfully ask the sheriff. And I understand about that there's one officer per district, because my son-in-law goes out there, and he is patrolling that area. I understand the difficulties. I definitely understand, but I just don't think the answer is to raise the speed limits on the segments that I have indicated.
I think there are other factors that we need to think about. We have a recommendation before us from professionals who are, have studied and collected data in regards to this recommendation. To make a specific change in this recommendation from the dais without a specific supporting data, I think raises an issue of a liability that we need to think about and consider. So my suggestion would be this, that we approve this with an addition to the motion to provide flexibility. And if there are changes that need to be made after additional review, that they could come back, and we'll consider those changes. But I think, based upon the professional information we have, I think it would be a mistake for us from this dais to make judgments counter to specific data. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. O'Hara, for clarification, are you referring to the first four items in this list?
It would be the first four, and then Antioch Road, 207th Street North to Overland Park City Limits.
I've out of the 13.
It would be-
The last one?
It's, there's Gardner West Road is the, what, last one, and Antioch Road just above that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See it?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think your comments are valid, but historically, we've had a tradition in terms of planning items, respecting individual commissioners if they've had questions or concerns, and deferring those actions accordingly. So if Commissioner O'Hara is, wants to divide the motion, I will be happy to second that, although I do respect the sheriff's recommendation and staff's recommendation.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to make this motion with the chairman's comments as well. And I trust the sheriff that, you know, to get with Jennifer, or to, you know, if you feel like something needs to change, then you'll come back before us. So I'll make a motion to move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 030-22 to raise the speed limit on various roads in the unincorporated area of Johnson County, as recommended by Public Works Department and the Sheriff's Office.
And I would ask you to add that the concerns that have been expressed from the dais, that they have the flexibility to review those and make changes.
Please add that.
Any question on the motion?
Hanslick, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I will make an amendment to that motion, that Flum Road, 191st to 199th Street, Flum Road, 199th Street to 207th, 207th Street, Schweitzer to Antioch, Cedar Niles Road, 207th to 199th Street, Antioch Road, 207th North to Overland Park City Limits, be deleted from this list.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ashcraft made the second. The amendment is before us. I will oppose the amendment. I think the motion and the statement of the motion can address those concerns. Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said earlier, I'm generally not in favor of increasing speed limits, especially on rural roads. But I do respect the sheriff and the Public Works Department for making those decisions. And I think the chairman's addition to the motion gives them the flexibility to look at those items that Commissioner O'Hara particularly pointed out, because I do also respect that there may be some other considerations. Or if, after changing the speed limit, if it's not working the way that had been planned, that that be changed back to the original mileage. But yeah, this is a very difficult item. But as the chairman said, I, this is not my area of expertise, but it's yours, so I will respect that. Thank you.
Other comments on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Yeah, and in reference to Commissioner O'Hara's request, we'll go down there, look and see what we can do. But I understand, we don't write tickets for revenue or any of that junk. We try to write violations to serve a purpose, because we get no revenue from the state anyway. It all goes to the state. So we will go down, and that son-in-law, I'll make sure he goes down, and we make sure it's safe. And if there's a problem, we'll bring it back.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like, I would respectfully like to do it the opposite way, take this off, and then do further study, and then bring it back. Because I don't want an accident to happen. I don't want a bicyclist like me ran off into the ditch or smashed. Or, you know, I think that, I think due diligence, and I know that you've studied this, but, you know, I'm out there on the ground, and I'm talking to folks, and I'm using these roadways, and I see how they're, I see how they're being used. I mean, we have people, pedestrians, we have pedestrians taking their dogs for walks on these streets, and there's no place to go except the ditch. So, you know, I'm just, I just would respectfully ask the commission to just take these off. And if we do, I just, if, I will be glad to go out and show the, what I have seen. And I just, I just would much prefer to be safe than sorry.
So would I, and-
That's the intent of the recommendation that's before us, I'm sure. Okay. Any other comments on the amendment? Ms. Allenbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I learned when, with the Four Corners, with that stop sign, just the study that you had put together with both the Sheriff's Office and our staff. And sometimes having a stoplight or decreasing or, you know, increasing sometimes is beneficial and helps the sheriff and helps local entities then control it. So I just want to offer that because I didn't understand. I was all for, you know, putting a light, you know, let's put a stop sign, you know, let's put a light there, and then it would have caused major chaos on that main road, and it would have been worse. So I just want to offer that, and that's all I wanted to say, Mr. Chair.
All right. The amendment is before us. We will vote on the amendment. Are there any questions on the amendment? All right. Clerk, please call a roll on the amendment.
Commissioner Fast?
No.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, no.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, no.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, no.
And Chairman Ilert?
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, no. I have five no's on the amendment, two yeses, the amendment fails. The motion is before us. Are there any further comments or questions? The original motion, any questions on the original motion? If not, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Fast? Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
No.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have six votes in favor, one opposed, motion carried. Thank you all very much. Next item.
Item number seven, IFB Number 2022-017. Consider authorizing a contract with Brian O'Meyer Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $872,107.10 for bridge construction, grading, surfacing, and seeding for a Ridgeview Road Bridge .8 miles north of 191st Street.
Mr. Vos?
Good morning, Jeff Vos with Public Works. This item is approval of a contract to reconstruct a bridge on Ridgeview Road approximately .8 miles north of 191st Street. The existing structure is of a type that's not easily rehabilitated and is a bit undersized. This project will replace that structure with a long-lasting structure with the appropriate waterway opening. While not having only one bidder is not ideal, Brian O'Meyer Construction is experienced with constructing these small rural bridges and has done good work for Johnson County in the past. Also, their prices ride in line with similar structures built for Public Works in the last several years despite the rather uncontrolled escalation in materials and labor prices we've been seeing lately. Public Work recommends awarding this contract to Brian O'Meyer Construction and I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions? All right, is there anyone present who'd like to speak to this item? If not, is it back before the commission? A motion would be in order, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Chair. I moved to authorize a contract with Brian O'Meyer Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $872,107.10 for bridge construction, grading, surfacing, and seeding for Ridgeview Road Bridge .08 miles north of 191st Street.
Allenbrand, second.
Myers made the motion to approve, Allenbrand seconded the motion to approve the contract as recommended. I'm not sure I asked, is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this item? All right, if not, it's back before the commission, a motion has been made. The clerk will call the rule.
Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, Mr. Ashcraft, apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Vos and his staff yesterday and one of the questions I asked, especially in light of only one bidder, is how do we ensure an arms-length relationship to make sure that we are getting the best value on bids in these kind of circumstances? And I was wondering if Mr. Vos or his staff could give us a quick synopsis of that effort.
Robin Lines, purchasing manager. From a purchasing standpoint and from a procurement standpoint, purchasing facilitates formal solicitations to ensure and insulate the departments against conflicts of interest. Once a solicitation is issued, there is a cone of silence, so all vendor communication comes through the purchasing department. Responses for bids and proposals are sealed and not opened until the date and time publicly advertised. And evaluation of the solicitations for bids, it is the lowest bid meeting the specification that gets the award. For requests for proposals, the evaluation committee members sign a non-disclosure conflict of interest form. And if there are conflicts, once the responses are received, then the evaluation committee member recuses themselves and they're replaced on the committee, so there are no conflicts.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you. I just want to note, this is in my district and actually, this is in, this is not in my district. Wait, this is 191st Street, yes, it is. Sorry about that. And Ridgeview Road and this, this bridge, it's too narrow for the roadway and I am in support of this bridge project.
Any other comments? If not, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Ilert, aye. I have seven votes in favor, motion carried. Next item.
Item number eight, consider authorizing the mental health department to add four FTE case manager positions for the 988 National Suicide Prevention Lifeline and authorize the reallocation and expenditure of fund balance reserves for FY 2022 in an amount not to exceed $170,000.
Mr. Fortney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tanner Fortney, Mental Health. In 2019, Congress passed legislation that made the 988 the nationwide three-digit number for mental health crisis and suicide prevention, and this operates through the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. As part of that legislation, by July of 2022, so next month, communication companies are required to route all of the 911 calls over to the 988 Lifeline that are related to any sort of suicide or mental health issue. And we have actually already in Johnson County moved our crisis line over. Our staff have been doing that since earlier this year, so we are ahead of the game, so to speak. However, we are receiving funding from KADADs and others to be able to provide us with some additional staffing for this lifeline. It is a very, very important system. And what we're looking at is, I put in the briefing sheet some performance measures to give you an idea. There's a number of different metrics that we're looking at that are actually going to be required from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Some of those, we don't track at this very moment because we don't have the technology at our current location to track it. But very soon, within the next few months, our staff that are manning that will actually be moved out to the 911 call center. They do have the technology to track that, so we'll have a lot more robust measures and be able to see how we're performing in those areas. The one thing that we do track right now is the percent of calls that are answered. And when I mean answered, I don't mean answered within a minute or within two minutes, I just mean answered period. And right now, we're at 80%, which is below the 90% target that's been established by SAMSA. We are better than most of the rest of the state. They were fluctuating about 60 to 70%, so we're doing a lot better. But quite frankly, we just don't have enough positions out there right now to be able to achieve those objectives. So, these funds will allow us to be able to hire four additional case managers to staff this line 24/7, which should improve that rate and hopefully will help save lives. And as I mentioned on the funding, the positions that are associated with this will be funded through KADADs grants and there's no county tax support that we're requesting for this. We were recently notified by KADADs that they received additional SAMSA funds for the 988 capacity building that will extend through 2023. And while they're still determining what they're going to do beyond that, the state has committed that beyond 2023, they are going to have funding available. So, we don't anticipate anything will be removed at this time. However, as with any positions, if we were to lose any funding or funding did not materialize in the coming years, then the positions would likely be eliminated. And in our particular instance, I think you all know that we have staffing challenges as it is as far as recruiting people. So, we're usually case management and clinicians are pretty, we pretty much cycle through those a lot. And so, if the positions were to be eliminated, we would be able to transfer the staff that are in these positions over to other vacant positions at the center. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Chairman, Becky Fast on Zoom would like to ask a question.
Commissioner Fast, do you have a question?
Yes, Tanner, thank you. So, you know, in your metrics, it says 49,000, you know, those are being answered through our regular crisis line. So, I mean, will the crisis line people be moved to the 988 or will we still have, you know, I mean, will they be different locations, you know, except 49,000 is what we're currently through our current line?
Okay, so a couple of things on that. The first thing is, is that we're already, our crisis line is still available and the same staff that are answering that crisis line are the ones that are also answering the 988. So, all that's routed to one center. On the number of crisis calls and contacts, I put that in there just to kind of give the board an idea about how the volume just in the last two years has increased by over 15,000 calls. Now, I will say in fairness, those are not just calls, those are also contacts that we have in the community in terms of crisis. But if we're not available to answer those crisis calls in the community, they're going to be coming most likely to the hotline. And we're only going to see that number increase in the coming years based on past data.
So, they will all be co-located in our emergency center, correct?
Correct.
And then this is for case managers? So, will there be a clinician? I mean, crisis, suicide crisis hotline, I mean, these are, these are really high-intensity clinical therapeutic work. A case manager usually is a bachelor or might not even have a bachelor. So, what is the degree and how will you be integrating clinical staff into this?
Case managers, you're correct, that is a bachelor-levels position. Case managers are trained in mental health, first aid, as well as other crisis intervention services, so they are trained to be able to de-escalate and assist the individuals until other assistance can arrive. We do have clinician support, though, that can be there to provide assistance if needed. It's just we don't have nearly the amount of clinical staff that would be needed for that versus case management. But the case managers are trained to be able to do that. And really, that would be, in this particular instance, based on the work they're doing, that would be really the appropriate level of credentialing to provide this service.
And then how will this be connected with our real-time mobile outreach teams? So, then these case managers will then, will there be an intake kind of triage and then they will decide what level of crisis is needed and then route it back to the 911 if it's an ambulance is needed or police? Can you explain kind of the process?
Well, I don't know if I can get into all of the detail on that because I don't work the line, but since they'll be integrated at the 911 call center, they'll be able to operate just like, just like it would if you called 911. Someone calls 911, they're having some sort of a, of an incident, I guess I'll use that term. They're able to dispatch law enforcement, they'd be able to dispatch co-responders, they would be able to dispatch any emergency service that would be needed to go out to the site.
Okay.
So, and part of this money was to provide money for mobile crisis teams? That is in the works, are you hearing, that we'll get that at some point, too?
My understanding is that is still in the works. I don't have a status update for you. As you know, we do have our MCRT, our Mobile Crisis Response Team now, that is still active.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Ms. O'Hara?
Well, I think that we're adding the staff, but I think that the bigger question is, is I would like staff to look into and give us numbers as to our cost increase, our cost increases with our electric rates are going to go up. I'm very curious about that and how we're going to be absorbing those costs. And I support, I support the mental health project here, but we are, we're looking at enormous cost increases and these increases are just now coming to really bear down upon us. And I'm sure that the fuel costs for especially the sheriff's office has put extraordinary stress on their budget. So, I just think that we also need to be looking at those additional costs.
I look at, and these positions are paid for by grants. Is this a national effort or a state effort only?
This is a national effort.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fortney, I wanted just to offer the observation that this is well-presented and I appreciate your logic chain. I want to clarify, though, the linkage that you are asserting, that the addition of these four staff will have a direct impact on the outcomes of, I guess you would call it, this service or this program. You're hoping to go from, I think you said 80% to 90% or higher, if I can make that assertion. But the question has to be, do we have failure standards? We add these four and if we do not have the anticipated impact, what do we do?
So, you are correct, 90% is the standard. I will just add as well that I did look, in 2021, it was 80%. That's what I put in the briefing sheet. I did, I think we had a conversation last week, I did actually look at the January through May data of this year and we're at about 85.6%. So, that has improved a little bit. I think a lot of that comes to just the fact that we've, our staff are more trained, they're more familiar with it. So, we're getting closer. I think when we add these four staff based on our projections, I think we would be at the 90%. Obviously, a lot of those metrics are affected by volume. That's really the issue. So, having those additional staff should see improvements in most of those measures. But if our crisis calls continue to escalate, and by all accounts, we think that they will based on past trends, then at some point, we will have to continue to reevaluate those measures and see, are we meeting those targets? And if not, we'll have to consider what other funding is available or is there some other avenue that we could pursue to try to meet those measures?
One follow-on, Mr. Chairman. Well, the question is, as I understand it, is your ability to answer the calls, and this will help address that, is there a direct link between answering the calls and the suicide rates that we are reporting? I'm hoping that those that call in are affected, but how many, how many that don't call in are in those counts?
So, I do not have the data available to perform any sort of an analysis of those that call in and do we see differences between those that are actually answering versus rates of those that don't? What I can tell you, though, is, is that when someone is in an acute form of crisis like that, when they call in, it is very, very important that in that moment, they are able to get a live person that can talk with them. If they call and the phone is not answered, then the likelihood of them calling back is significantly decreased and that can lead to suicide completion rates increasing. So, yes, it is very, very important based on other research, but I can't tell you specifically because I don't have the data at this point to be able to tell you what's happening in our call center.
Fair point, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Hanslick?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fortney. First of all, I'm, I am just so excited that Johnson County has made mental health a priority and that we are investing resources to save lives and to make lives better. So, I couldn't be more supportive of this. I did have a question related to what Commissioner Ashcraft asked. I noticed in the briefing sheet, you do have a list of the metrics that were developed by SAMSA to determine outcomes for this program. And what I'm hearing is that once you relocate to the 911 call center, they'll be better, you'll be better able to measure those outcomes. And while number of calls answered is obviously very important, we don't want anybody to not have their call answered. I think to Commissioner Ashcraft's comment, there are, there are various ways of measuring the success. Like, did we get someone referred to an appropriate service? Did we, did we, are they continuing to get mental health services? So, I'm, can you speak to that a little bit more about how you'll, you'll be able to measure those outcomes or those metrics?
So, what we try to do in most cases, we do this with, I'll use our co-responder program as an example because it's very similar. What we usually try to do is when we have contacts with individuals that are contemplating suicide, once the situation is de-escalated and hopefully they've been diverted from higher levels of care, we do have staff that do community outreach and follow-up with them. And we actually work with them as best we can to see if we can get them into mental health services so that they, if they need a case manager, if they need a clinician, if they need to have prescription psychotropic medications, we're able to follow up with those. We're not always successful in that because it's based on the individual's desire to enter those services, but we do have follow-ups on that. So, that is something that we will be making a very concerted effort to do. I cannot guarantee in every instance that's going to happen, but it is part of the plan.
Can I ask just one more follow-up question? Will, will this 988 be available and will people be encouraged to call it even if they are not the person experiencing the crisis, but if they're with someone experiencing a crisis? Maybe you could talk a little bit about who, who can benefit from calling this, this number?
So, this is something that really benefits anyone in the community. If you're... If you're an individual, if you have a loved one or a friend or someone you know that's suffering and they need assistance, they can certainly call this line. Of course, the other thing I would mention, though, is that if you know of someone that is experiencing mental illness or you suspect that, certainly, please encourage them to seek help at one of our clinics, usually our Oletha or our Shawnee offices. We do walk-ins, we don't do things by appointments. We want to see people, whatever point they're in need. So please, during the week, encourage them to come in. They can go through our intake process, meet with our clinicians, and be able to get them the appropriate services. So hopefully, they won't have to use this line.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fortney, I want to thank you because I know this is another step in working towards crisis center, trying to put things into place to help people, help the sheriff's office. And things like this are very important for our community, and I really appreciate you. And I mispronounced your name, so I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? If not, it's back before the commission.
Sir, we do have one. We do have a gentleman that would like to speak.
Hi. Jeff Harkness, 9407 Blue Jacket, Overland Park. We're one of only two counties that does mental health in-house in the state of Kansas.
I'm sorry, what?
We're only one of two counties that does in-house mental health. All the other ones have privatized.
I don't think that's correct, but I can't give you a specific answer.
Well, have we thought about privatizing it? Is it maybe some kind of asset swap, the net link or the embark building for services rendered? I know if we used a national company, this would probably be part of it, it would be a small portion of it. But I don't know. Is that an idea?
Tanner, can you speak to any of that?
So on the first question, there are 20, I think there's 26 mental health centers located in the state of Kansas. There are two that are actually part of county government. That would be us, and that would be Sedgwick County in Wichita. As far as contracting it out to private vendors, I know that we've come to you before for certain services that we evaluate, that we don't provide in-house, and we do contract those out. As a matter of fact, that would be the reason why we had the DECA contract on today. There are some specialty services that makes a lot of sense for. It's very difficult to contract mental health services in general out because of the complexities of it. Most companies don't have the ability to do the services that we actually do between the integration of case management, of clinical services, of the medication services that we provide. We also have residential facilities that we have for short-term basis. That's typically not something that a lot of private providers are able to really do and support. So that's been a big challenge. Now, yes, again, there are some services that we do look at contracting out, but being able to do that as a whole would be very, very difficult.
Okay. Well, thank you. I hope that answers the question. Any other comments? All right. It's back before the commission, a motion would be in order. Ms. Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize the Mental Health Department to add 4.0 FTE case manager positions for the 988 National Suicide Prevention Lifeline and authorize the reallocation and expenditure of fund balance reserves for FY 2022 in an amount not to exceed $170,000.
Allenbrand, second.
Motion has been made and seconded to authorize the Mental Health Department to add the four FTEs in regards to the 988 calling program. Ms. O'Hara?
Yes, I just want to make a comment that these are being funded by federal grants, but those federal monies come from us. We simply send it to Washington, they take their cut, and then they send it back to us with all the strings attached. So I just want people to know that this is not free money, that this comes from our pockets.
Any other comments? If not, clerk, please call the rule on the motion.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. I have seven votes in favor. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number nine, consider authorizing the publication of a proposed budget for Johnson County Government in the amount of $1,651,649,184 for the fiscal year 2023, notifying the county clerk of the proposed intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate and setting a public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, August 22, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the board chambers.
Ms. Symes.
Robin Symes of the Budget and Financial Planning Department. As the clerk stated, this item does three things. It sets the maximum expenditure budget, the 1.65 billion amount. It also notifies the county clerk, which we're required to do by July 20, of our intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. And we're also, and this notifies them that we're exceeding the revenue-neutral rate for the county taxing district, park and recreation taxing district, and also the library taxing district. And then the third thing that this does is it sets our public hearing date for August 22 at 6:00 p.m. A few items pertaining to the budget. The budget is required to be adopted by October 1. Again, we are supposed to notify the county clerk of the intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate by July 20. The total estimated county mill levy, I wanted to point this out in the background, is estimated right now at 24.542 mils. That's a 1.026 mil reduction. That is .026 more than what we had talked about. The reason why that is, is we use the county's certified assessed valuation for the actual state form. So once those pending exemptions come through in October, our valuation will go down, which means our mill levy will go up. And so that's why for the actual notice of publication, you'll see a 1.026 mil reduction. However, once those pending exemptions come through, that mill levy will come back up to that one mil reduction that we had put in the proposed budget. It has 315 million in ad valorem taxes, and I'll stand for any questions.
Ms. Symes, just for clarification, we considered this at a committee of the whole? Is that correct?
Yes, we did.
And the committee of the whole made a recommendation to approve this to the commission, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. I think I want to emphasize also, the mill levy, it is our intent to be at least a one-mil reduction from last year. However, we do not know what our total assessed valuation will be until later, and so that might go up, it might go down. So.
Yes, there are usually fluctuations of .001, 2. I mean, it could be minor, minor, but yes, it will be approximately a one-mil reduction at this point.
Okay. All right. Questions? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right. If not, a motion is in order. Ms. Allenbrand.
Mr. Myers was.
Excuse me. Mr. Myers, you wish to make a motion?
I was scratching my head.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you, Chair. I move the board authorize the publication of the proposed budget for Johnson County Government in the amount of $1,651,649,184 for fiscal year 2023, based upon the determinations made by the board and its work sessions, that the board notify the county clerk of the proposed intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rates for the county, library, and park and recreation taxing districts, and that the board set the public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, August 22, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the board chambers.
Allenbrand, second.
Myers made the motion, Allenbrand, second of the motion to approve the proposed budget as presented with other dates involved. And again, I would note for the record that passing this motion means the budget cannot be increased, it can only be decreased from this point forward if this motion passes. Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask Ms. Symes if she could confirm the information that's in the briefing sheet, because I'm sure that some people will be looking at that published budget number and making the assumption that all of that money comes from property tax revenue. And as it says in the briefing sheet, first of all, of that amount, about 488 million is in reserves. And then of the remaining amount, my understanding is it's about 27% of that remaining amount, or about 314.5 million, is actually from property tax revenue. Can you confirm that?
Yes. Yes, that is correct. We have other revenues that come into the county that help with the budget. We'll have dedicated fee revenues. We also have grants, contract revenue. For example, wastewater is a huge portion of this budget with their user fees. And so, yes, there are other revenues. And as we talked about during the proposed budget overview, we have that county general tax support expenditures, and those are only about 484 of that total. So if you exclude that, really, the remaining portion is either reserves or other dedicated revenue sources.
No, I appreciate that because I think sometimes the general public doesn't understand that much of that budget does not include property tax.
Correct. Thank you.
Ms. Symes, could you also, I know the operating, the general fund operating budget, that number is about, what, 550 million?
Correct.
So that's the general operation. And then you've got parks, you've got recreation, you've got wastewater, and then you have other activities that are not paid for by either sales or property taxes. So the 550 million is the real operational part of the county's budget.
That's for the general fund, yes.
General fund, correct. Ms. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to point out that the 1.126 billion dollars expenditures is totally funded by every, it is funded by the good people of Johnson County, whether it's fees, whether it's property taxes, whether it's federal grants, which we ultimately pay for anyway. This is, in my opinion, a bloated budget. We were not supposed to be going over 1.14 billion dollars until 2026, and here we are in 2023, blowing past that by nearly 20 million dollars. I mean, it's just unbelievable how we just say, oh, well, you know, it's just property tax, sales tax. You know, it's really, every penny of this budget is paid for by the good people of Johnson County. And we need to be really good stewards of every cent that we spend, and I don't believe that we have been to this point.
Robin, let me ask you this. There have been significant federal revenues that have come to the county over the last year and even more this year. How are those revenues accounted for? They are part of our budget, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And so those are included, which increases the maximum expenditure budget as well.
Right. So all of that revenue has to be reflected in our budget. So that's, again, part of the process that we have to follow. Other questions? Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, I appreciate Commissioner O'Hara's concern. I'm wondering if she has specific.
Well, yes, I will be bringing up specific items as we go through this budget process through amendments.
When we went through each department, I.
We didn't really have, we really didn't have an opportunity at that point, but when the budget comes before us, I will have specific amendments to the budget.
Can you show that at this point?
Will you identify today what those are? Are they reductions or are they increases in spending?
They're reductions. One example is to roll back the Department of Health and Environment to pre-COVID. We do not need an epidemiologist and we do not need trackers within the Health Department. The library, I know that on the seat, and this is future, but I will continue to oppose the library building, a $55 million library to replace the Antioch and 151st Street.
That's not in this budget.
I realize that, and there are several, but I will be bringing those forth. That is just one example. Also, I do not believe that United Community Services should have 125,000. I know it's a small amount, but it's a non-governmental organization, and they are supporting critical race theory-type programs that our staff has participated in. And when you have thought partners, I just think that that's over the line. I mean, there's just tons, tons of areas. The biggest problem is, is that we are not building our budget from the ground up. We are simply adding on. We don't require each department to go back and revisit their budget and come back with us and find efficiencies. And with this inflation in front of us, our residents of this county are going to be slammed. They are being slammed. And to foist upon them added property taxes on top of all of the fees, it's just that we have to do a better job. And I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak to this. It's we have to look at our budget through a different lens. We cannot just say, well, you got this last year, so we'll just give you another whatever.
I would hope that you could provide that list to us prior to the.
You will have it when I make the amendments. Thank you.
Well, I would make this observation. When we went through the department-by-department review of the budget, we had an opportunity to make those direct changes, and none of those changes were offered at that time. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't consider them going forward, but the best opportunity to make those kind of changes were at the point when public health budget came before us. We could have made those changes at that time. So I'm.
We were given, we were given lists as to, this is what we propose, and then these are added asks. There wasn't really an opportunity to go through and have specifics at that point.
Oh, I reject that completely. That's not, that's not correct. And you can look at the record and the.
Anyway, I will be making my amendments, and I appreciate this opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I view the action today as largely procedural. It's a requirement of state statute. I think that the discussion that we've had on this item, I think, is appropriate and it's contestable, and I think it should be because it's an issue that has been raised over the years. I am in particular interested in, as we go forward, passed today, looking at these federal funds that are available to the county and how we might provide some direct tax relief, as well as discussing any programmatic or operational issues. The review process we use required three or more commissioners to raise issues. And, Mr. Chairman, as has been my practice since being on the commission, I have listed a willingness to discuss in depth all of those issues each year, but we have not had the interest by three or more commissioners on most of the items. There have been a few items, and I appreciate that and those efforts. But we do have an incremental-based budgeting approach, and I very much have been supportive of and have encouraged staff to pursue performance-based budgeting. We've made progress over the last few years, but there's more progress that can be made.
Thank you, Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Ashcraft, I really appreciate your comments. I think there has been a lot of staff and also commissioners working to, there's been some consolidations, there's been a lot of things going on in departments, I know that, which we don't hear publicly, but there's been a lot of work behind the scenes going on to look at how can we make things more efficient? And it's the job of the county manager. And when those things come forward, there's just been a lot of work that's gone on from Johnson County Parks and Rec to the libraries and some of the funds. It's also seems to me there's just so much miscommunication because the capital improvement is not part of this, but it's something to look forward to. is not part of this, but it's something to look forward to the future. And I just, it upsets me to sit here and say that we've never looked, we've not done any research, and we've not worked to try to help do that. And some things are not always done overnight. And I just want that to be noted. There has been a lot of work, and there has been a lot of things done that have made a difference, and it's never noted. It doesn't seem to get noted sometimes on this dais.
Okay.
Chairman, Commissioner Fast would like to speak. She had her hand raised.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Fast.
Yeah, I guess, you know, when we talk about commissioners bringing forth amendments, the public needs to know what these amendments do. And that has been something I bring up every year. When I was council president, I brought up the last-minute changes to the budget is not transparent. The public should know what we're each bringing forth to change the budget and before the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this item? All right, if not, it's back for the commission. A motion would be in order. Ms. Hanslick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board authorize the publication of a proposed budget for Johnson County government in the amount of 1,651--
Chairman?
I think I--
Excuse me, Jeff Myers, or Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Allen Brand already made the motion and seconded.
I'm sorry.
But I lost track.
Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Allen Brand.
That is correct. Mr. Myers and Ms. Allen Brand made the motion. And the second, thank you for reminding. So the motion is before us. Please call the rule.
Commissioner Fast?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara?
No.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand?
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye. I have six votes in favor, one opposed, and motion carried. Thank you all very much. I'm going to call a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back for the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you.
I thought you were ready.
And as Tom mentioned, we have a communication plan and strategy put together. And we've launched a webpage, which if you're able to see on the screen, I have it up here. And I'd like to walk you through that and point out some of the details that we have already put out for the public. The notice includes information on the change that happened in law. It talks about the estimated tax notice itself, when it's coming, and what to watch for. We have included a sample notice, which has information on it, a lot of detailed information. I'll bring that up. I'm hoping you can see that. The information on here talks about the prior year tax rates, proposed tax rates, and the revenue neutral rates. If you aren't familiar, the revenue neutral rate is the tax rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenue as levied the previous tax year using the current tax year's total assessed valuation. This information will be listed for each taxing subdivision, and that includes all the taxing subdivisions that make up the tax unit for that property. The notice will also include the difference between the revenue neutral rate and the proposed rate, as well as detailed hearing information, such as dates, times, and locations for those taxing subdivisions planning to exceed their revenue neutral rate. Because this message is so important, we've been working closely with the PIO team this year on this communication strategy and a comprehensive plan. I'd like to thank Jody and Tim for putting together the webpage, as well as some articles that have already been published. We had one article in the Johnson County Magazine, and there's a planned article for the Best Times. And let me go back to the webpage itself. The webpage also has additional information and questions, as well as frequently asked questions for our taxpayers and county residents. Some of those are such as, what is the revenue neutral rate? And this helps explain that, as well as where do my property taxes go? What are ad valorem property taxes? How are my property taxes used? And how does the county determine my property valuation? The great thing about this is we can add information to this page as we learn more about what are questions our county residents may have related to this topic. As we get closer to August, when we get ready to send out these estimated tax notices, our communication strategy will include a press release to local media outlets, as well as the use of social media and our website. So again, the takeaway from today is for property owners, there is an estimated tax notice coming in August. The notice is for informational purposes only. It is not a tax bill and should not be paid. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I would hope that would be in big letters across the statement that this is not a tax bill and it is not to be paid, and make them as large as somebody like me can read them too. So, yes. Let me ask you this. Is this the first step? And what is going to be the price of this mailing, cost of this mailing? Do we know?
So this is the first mailing to the residents, property owners of Johnson County. If you remember, last year, the revenue neutral rate was implemented for taxing subdivisions and taxing authorities. But this is the first year residents and property owners will receive an estimated tax notice. So this will be new to them, so we don't want it to be a surprise. As we put in our briefing sheet, the note on this, we're looking at a cost of around $120,000 to send out 200 or so estimated tax notices to property owners, and that would include the mailing costs as well as the postage.
And again, this is just informational only.
Correct.
And what are the additional steps, if necessary, to send out additional notices and/or refunds? What is that process?
So there was some change to the law this year that allowed for, there's a process for taxing subdivisions as far as going through and making notification. They have to notify the county clerk by July 20th of their intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. If something happens and that is not done, there is an ability for the county clerk to cap what is sent out. And so there should not be, based on those checks and balances, a process where we would need to send out refunds. Those taxing subdivisions, we would be checking to make sure that they have sent that notice to, of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And if they haven't, they would be capped at what their previous year's valuation and property taxes were.
Well, but my point, my point to my question is, at least under the old statute, if you miscalculated, or there was information that was not totally accurate, and you had to refund taxpayers a dollar and a half apiece because of a miscalculation, is that still part of that process?
I'm not as familiar with that, but we can-
Statutory requirement. Mr. Franzen, can you answer that?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you had asked that question actually previously, and when we talked about it, to be clear, there won't be a miscalculation of tax bills. The tax bills that we send out will be based on the mill levy information that we have, and we issue the tax rule in November, by November 1st of each year. The issue that Amy was talking about was the ability for county clerks to keep any jurisdiction from getting more tax revenue if they don't follow the notification process where they have told us when they're going to have their hearing, where they're going to have their hearing, what time, so the community can come engage with the public body to talk about exceeding the revenue neutral rate. If they follow those steps, they can do that. If they do not, under the law that was passed this year, the cleanup, was giving the county clerks the ability to say, no, those jurisdictions cannot get additional revenue. They are tied to what they received last year. So there won't be an opportunity for us to have tax bills that won't be accurate. We will not be issuing any refunds.
Yeah, well, absolutely. We want those bills to be accurate. So other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could also add on to that statement, just so you're aware, also as part of the new legislation, there is a process too, that once the county clerk determines that the, that procedure wasn't followed, that that goes to the Board of Tax Appeals, BODA, for their review with those suggested jurisdictions and process. So there is now an entire process that would go through. But this would also provide, so that we're not getting errors in tax bills going out and refunds. It's another layer to protect from that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I really appreciate the extra step and the mailings. And I was gonna, Chairman Ilard was talking about being able to read it, big enough print. And, you know, not everybody uses a computer, or not everybody knows, you know, they just don't have a computer, or they don't have an email, they don't have Facebook, they don't, especially seniors. So I really appreciate that. And that was something we found, for those who wanted vaccines, we found that out, and the staff actually had someone go to their home. And so they just didn't have the knowledge of knowing. So this will help with that. And I'm glad to hear it's also a little bit bigger print.
Mr. Ricecraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Franzen, I'll direct this to you, but if you'd like to hand it off to the PIO, please feel free. The statement was made earlier that we didn't want it to be a surprise. This is a new process, a new notification. Given that there are some 600,000 residents, I suspect a small percent may be surprised and will want to have further inquiry. So what steps are we taking, or have we taken, to minimize the surprise factor?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. And while Amy touched on some of the highlights of the communication strategy, working with Jody and her team in the Public Information Office, there's a number of things that we'll be communicating. We've talked about the JOCO Magazine, we've talked about Best Times, we've talked about social media, we will be doing press releases. There will be a number of opportunities for the community to know what's going on. In addition to the mailing that we're sending, we will have a, an insert that goes with that, that clearly states, this is not a bill. Do not pay this. So people will get that. And if that's the first time they've heard about it, it will be clear that this is something new, and it's something that they don't need to take action on with regards to payment. But it is telling them, you need to be aware, there will be hearings for certain jurisdictions that are exceeding the revenue neutral rate. So that may be the first time they get it. We also have a number of talking points ready for staff on the phones, and we have, obviously, the web presence we talked about. So if that's the first time they get this information, and they call, we're going to give them information that talks exactly about the information that they should have, and let them know what actions they may need to take.
Thank you. Ms. Hansley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions about the form. First of all, can you reiterate that this form will include not only the county taxing jurisdiction and library and park, but all the taxing jurisdictions that may impact that person or property?
Yes, that's a great point. This will include all taxing subdivisions, jurisdictions within that taxing unit for that property. So there may be quite a lengthy list. It will be at least two pages. It may even spill over into three pages.
Thank you. And then I had a question. It looks like the first section that says current year tax estimates, that's going to be the overall, and then it looks like the second page then will be specific to that property. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So the property, you're correct. The current year tax estimates will be specific for each taxing subdivision for that property. It has the revenue neutral rate amount there, as well as the proposed budget, and then the difference. And then the second page is focusing more on those taxing divisions with the prior rate and their public hearings, which it will include the date, the time, the location for each of those different public hearings that are being held, for those that are exceeding the revenue neutral rate. For those that aren't exceeding, there will just be information that they're not exceeding.
So I guess my question is, will this include the estimated rate for a particular property?
It will, yes. Yes, it will. It will include a total at the bottom as well. The one thing that would not be on here, and again, this isn't going to be as current as your tax bill with all that information, but it will include all those taxing subdivisions, and it will have a total. The one thing that is not included here are any special assessments or any other estimates that might need to be included as you get closer to your tax billing time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you, TTV and PIO, all the acronyms. Next item, Chairman, is the City of DeSoto. They have a notice of public hearing, notified the board that they will be conducting a public hearing on Thursday, July 7. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider the proposed adoption of the Sunflower Redevelopment District, TIF project plans one and two. The project plans are generally located at the former Sunflower Ammunition Plant in DeSoto, Kansas. A copy of the notice of public hearing along with the resolution are attached. And I'll pause to see if there's questions.
Questions?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara.
Okay. So when this came before us, and we voted not to veto it, but, and I did not vote with the majority on that, that there was a limit of $200 million, and it specifically talked about $160 million for remediation and $40 million for infrastructure. And so my question is, is that this indicates that on this one project, that it's going to be 202,600,000, which exceeds the original 200 million. And I just want to understand, how does that happen? Because I didn't see any escalation clauses in the first approval of the overall concept.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address that PEG Trent Chief Counsel. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner O'Hare for inquiring of this issue prior to today's meeting. So before the meeting, she had allowed me, she had this question immediately before. I've had an opportunity, and I haven't been able to share this with Commissioner O'Hare, because I just was asked the question early this morning and late last night, but I did have communication with the city manager from the city of DeSoto. And he has indicated that, from his knowledge of this, of these inquiries, that there is no cap on the TIF district for any revenues or expenses from a particular project plan area. And he had indicated that there were provided initially two project areas, about 300 acres in size, and that the first project plan was expected to generate 202.6 million, and that the project two was to be 2 million. And he indicated that debt service is an eligible TIF expense pursuant to the state statute. I have not had an opportunity to verify that, but his knowledge, and he looked into this this morning, that that is a permissible expenditure. He also indicated to me that it may have been in a briefing sheet, as Commissioner O'Hare had correctly outlined, of $160 million for remediation and $40 million for infrastructure. He said those figures generally align with the project plans and one of the two. So perhaps, you know, from that, that was accurate, that was communicated in the initial programming. But at this point, he indicated that all of this is consistent with that TIF district that was originally brought forward.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to make one other comment.
Go ahead.
The demolition of the buildings, that was part of the contractual agreement that Sunflower Redevelopment LLC was responsible for back in 2005. And now those expenditures, as I understand it, are going to be paid for by the property taxes that will go to the TIF district. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, if I may address that again, PEG Trent Chief Counsel. It's a little bit more complex than a yes/no answer because of the fact that, and we can get into specifics, but there was more contaminants, if you will, to simplify this, that were found. There were changes without amendments and more responsibilities that were needed to take care of. But if you would go with the simple looking at the agreement, as Commissioner O'Hare said, yes, would be the simple answer. However, there were more contaminants found, more basis for removal of those contaminants. The Army has continued to assist, and they're the ones truly responsible for removing those contaminants, though. For simplification.
If I may, if I may add, the Army, I believe, was, they were very specific in their requirements most, and I believe that it was munitions and, munitions and propellants that they were responsible for. And it listed out all of the requirements for the Sunflower Redevelopment LLC that they were, that they were responsible for. And so now, public money is going to be used to remediate those sites that they agreed to contractually in 2005. Maybe there are additional expenses, but the long and the short of it is, is that a lion's share of these expenses is going to be on the backs of the taxpayers at Johnson County rather than the developer.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor this-
Let me make this comment. Relying on numbers that were developed in 2004, 2005 for this cleanup, those numbers turned out to be grossly underestimated. And the cost of the cleanup has risen considerably beyond what those original numbers call for. So there have been, my goodness, all kinds of discussions between the state, the feds, and the local property owner. And so I would not rely upon those 2004 and 2005 numbers.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could add on, also, when we say public funds, public funds has been used throughout this. The federal government has been cleaning the Army, so it's all of our tax dollars, so there isn't any, it's continuation.
Correct, correct. But this is, this is local property taxes. And I will note that the Parsons Ammo Plant is 98% cleaned up, and not one penny of local property taxes was used in that cleanup. So it's just that the people, good people of Johnson County, they're shouldering this expense, and they just need to know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if there is no development on the Sunflower Ammunition Plant, it will set vacant, and there will be no direct benefit to any property taxpayer in the county. All right, next item.
Next item is another notice of public hearing. The city of Overland Park has notified the board that they will be conducting a public hearing on Monday, July 11. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider the proposed adoption of the Metcalf 108 Development Project Plan. The TIF project is generally located at the northeast corner of I-435 and Metcalf Avenue in Overland Park. A copy of the notice of public hearing along with the resolution are attached. And I'll pause to see if there's questions on that.
All right, next.
Okay. Last item is the CRI report, County Economic Research Institute indicators. The June edition, most of the items cover through April. In April, the unemployment rate was 1.7% compared to 2.7 the previous year. January, February, and March unemployment rates exceeded 2%, so a small dip in the unemployment rate in April. Year-to-date, single-family homes' sales in April were 2,756 compared to 3,103 last year. This is an 11% decrease. Single-family building permits year-to-date issued were 625 compared to 826 of the previous year. This is a 24% decrease. Total retail sales for Johnson County through March 2022 were $4.3 billion compared to $3.9 billion through March of last year. This is a 10% increase. And with that, Chairman, that concludes my report. I stand for question.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Are there any other reports or communications?
No, sir.
I think not, so we will turn to Commission comments. Ms. Fast is no longer on our Zoom ability, so Ms. Allenbrand, do you have any comments?
Yes, I attended the Juneteenth event that the staff, it was a combination of people working on that, and it was really, really nice. And I really appreciate all the work that was put into that event, even though I got burnt really bad. So next time, I need to be more careful. But thank you so much for doing that. I also attended the Leadership Series in Overland Park, and our county manager spoke at it, and she did a really good job, and it was nice hearing your story. With that, I think that's all that I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ricecraft.
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Hansley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a busy week. On Tuesday, I took part in the MARC Total Transportation Policy Council, of which I'm a member. And it was interesting, one of the things I wanted to note, we had a report from KDOT about a research study they're doing called the Midwest Road Usage Charge Study. I think it's a lot of people realize there's been some concern about revenue production as cars, people begin to buy more alternative energy cars or electric vehicles, and how to maintain that revenue stream, or different ways of maintaining a revenue stream rather than just off of gasoline tax. And so Kansas, or KDOT, is participating in this study that is looking at other ways to collect those kinds of fees, particularly a road usage fee. And it's very preliminary at this point, and it's very much focused on the rural areas, which I did raise the issue of, that about half the population of the state is, or in, not in the rural areas. But I think that'll be interesting to see what they, what they come up with in their, in their study. Also, at the Mid-America Regional Council, I participated in a focus group to talk about the early learning community and how we can strengthen childcare and early learning options in the metro area. And it was a very preliminary discussion, but I had the opportunity to meet Larry Lewis Jr., who is our new Director for Growing Futures Early Education Center in Overland Park in my district, and look forward to talking to him and seeing what we can do. I was particularly thinking of, in last week's report, that the, there had been some discussion of putting some ARPA funding toward helping small businesses who want to develop childcare. And then, let's see. Finally, I spoke to the Bel Air Homeowners Association, which is the neighborhood just to the west of Meadowbrook Park. And we had a great discussion about the Community Satisfaction Survey and about the value that people get for their property taxes. They appreciate the libraries, the parks, which is, especially Meadowbrook, which is in walking distance. And we're very grateful to have that information, and I was grateful to meet with them.
All right, Ms. Myers. No report. Ms. O'Hara.
Well, this has been a busy morning. And what I am focused on is 199th Street Corridor, and I just received this from, it's a MARC communique on centers and corridors. 199th Street is recognized as the southernmost east-west corridor in Johnson County, connecting major centers of activity from US 69 to US 169 west of I-35, including the BNSF intermodal hub. The project, they're talking about a project out there. The project will extend existing 199th Street improvements easterly to rent a road, prioritize investments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which this is, none of this is in compliance with CarNAP. So we have, we have an annexation that Edgerton made that has been taken to District Court, which the case number was number 21CV02184. And on June 7, 2022, Judge Vano confirmed that this was an illegal annexation per KSA 12-520G, but that the folks that brought the suit did not have standing. And the only, the only recourse is to have the Attorney General to weigh in on this. So because of how rapid all of this is moving, and that we are going to be taking a time off here very quickly, I think next week will be our final meeting prior to two weeks' vacation, that I move the B OCC to request the Attorney General's Office to take action on, I'm sorry, I move the B OCC to request the AG's office to take action on or against the Edgerton annexation due to the lack of consideration that 199th Street is not equipped to accommodate the immediate increase of truck traffic. And then this would simply, this would simply request of the Attorney General's Office to take this to court so that it would clarify whether this very narrow band of land connecting to the annexation east of Gardner Road was actually legal or not. This would simply bring clarification to the process, and I would just encourage my colleagues to request this of the Attorney General's Office, because it already has been confirmed that according to KSA 12520G, it is an illegal annexation. It's simply a technical issue that only the city or the person that has requested the annexation has standing, other than the Attorney General. So I would plead with my colleagues to please address this so that we have clarification whether this was legal or not, and the Attorney General would take it up, and then we would have, then we would know.
Well, I would say this, the annexations are actions of the city, and that would be a city responsibility.
But the responsibility that we have is that truck traffic on 199th Street from these, from the intermodal, and that is not, does not comply with our CarNAP plan, and that we are simply, we are simply safeguarding our local roads. And we just simply need clarification. Was this, was this legal or wasn't it? And it can go to the Attorney General, and he can take it to court, and we'll have the clarification. But we are, this is being jammed down our throat. MARC suddenly has decided that 199th Street is the corridor, and these poor folks out there, they have no voice.
Well, I think the Public Works Department, Mr. PD, has spoken to us once or twice that your interpretation of CarNAP is not what was intended. So I think we need to proceed on.
But we have not, we have not specified that 199th Street is a truck route. It is not specified. And according to CarNAP, that we are to aggressively keep interstate truck traffic off of our county roads, because interstates and state highways are the intended routes for trucks.
I understand what you're saying, but it does not speak to local traffic. It speaks to interstate traffic, not local traffic. And there are local businesses- to interstate traffic, not local traffic. And there are local businesses. So, I, again, I-
And every, every time that you prohibit truck traffic, there are these stipulations that, yes, local truck deliveries, farm deliveries, all of that is excluded. We're talking specifically. And, and, and MARK is acknowledging, they, they are, they are stating that they want to have BNSF traffic on 199th Street. This is in black and white.
I am not suggesting that any of us agree with that conclusion.
So, then, please.
If you have a motion, make the motion.
I did.
All right. Go ahead and make the motion.
I, I will make it again. I move the BOCC to request the AG's office to take action on or against the Edgerton annexation due to the lack of consideration that 199th Street is not equipped to accommodate the immediate increase of truck traffic. And this is east of Gardner Road.
Is there a second motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will second, but I have some clarifications that I need.
All right, the motion has been seconded. Go ahead.
Um, Ms. O'Hara, your request is that the county, the board, communicate with the Attorney General's office and ask the Attorney General's office to intervene or not to resolve the questions that you have raised. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And this is on annexation. And according to Judge Vanno, he, he stated that it is an illegal annexation per KSA 12-52G. It's just that there's a technical issue that the, that the landowners adjacent to this has no standing. It's a technical issue. And that, that the Attorney General does have jurisdiction, and that they do have standing, and that they can clarify whether this was an illegal or an illegal annexation.
Well, if the judge has made a decision, uh-
Now, that, it was a technical-
Why are we intervening?
It's because it was a technical issue that the people that brought the suit, they do not have standing, and that, that it has to be, that the Attorney General has standing. But they don't.
Well, I'm not gonna support overruling the judge in, in regards to any decision. I think we need to move forward. Ms. Allenbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, Commissioner O'Hara, I wish you would share information prior to-
I just-
Could I just finish? You know, I just wished you would share the information before this meeting. You know, I, you know, just, and, and I'm just gonna say it, you know, I had a meeting yesterday that I had scheduled with some constituents. It got blown up all over Facebook. If you would've came to me prior to and said, that was your district. If you would've came to me and said, "Could we jointly have a meeting together prior to?" I would've been more than happy to do that. So, you're sitting here begging me, and I'd be more than happy to listen if you provide us with the information ahead of time. So, that's my only comment. I will not support this.
Well, I believe that Jennifer Williams, I believe that she discussed this in your meeting yesterday.
Uh, that's another subject. So, let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Hanslick.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, I, I realize there may be times when it's necessary to, and appropriate to make motions during Commission comments, but I find it very much a lack of transparency and openness to just kind of bring this information up when there's no chance for the commissioners to study it or to have any public input. So, I cannot support this.
Okay.
We can, we can, we can, we can bring it up again next week, which I will, because this is, this is very time-sensitive. The judge's decision was made on June 7. This is simply us requesting the Attorney General to look at this and to go to court and determine whether this was illegal or an illegal annexation, period. It's not, it's nothing, it's, it's nothing more or nothing less. And I only found out about this. And time is of essence because we're going to be on break for two weeks.
All right, thank you very much. The motion is before us. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, no.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, no.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, no.
And Chairman Ilert.
Ilert, no. I have five votes opposed, two in favor, motion failed.
Or.
Excuse me.
Becky Fast.
I'm sorry, you're right. Four votes, four votes opposed. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, you don't call the rule. You're a county senator.
Very much. That concludes Commission comments, except for my comment. I want to say a special thank you to the Juneteenth group who put on an, I thought, an outstanding program. And Virginia Sewing was a very, very, uh, uh, important part of that program. Also, at 3:00 PM today, there is memorial service for Mr. Doug Smith, who used to be our wastewater director. And so, anyway, our condolences to that family. With that, we are adjourned, and we will reconvene for agenda review. I will ask this question. Do you want to postpone the agenda review until you've completed lunch, or go ahead with it at this point in time? No objection. We will take a five-minute break and come back for agenda review. Thank you all.